Noon. This is the regular city council meeting for January 7th, 2025. I got that right, actually. I said 2025, didn't I? So with that, I would like to call this meeting to order and I'd like to announce the color guard.
Detail. Hope. About peace. Present on. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Order on. Forward on. Left, 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 left.
All right, thank you. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Certainly. Councilmember Harmon.
Here.
Councilmember Oscar Gutierrez.
Present.
Councilmember Friedman.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Jordan.
Here.
Councilmember Sneddon is not present. Councilmember Alejandro Gutierrez.
Present.
And Mayor Rouse.
Here. Okay, so today we have a slightly different schedule and we have people that are being honored and recognized by the number. If you wish to speak to one of those honorees or people that are being announced today, please fill out a speaker slip and indicate so by the number. Public comment for Alejandro Gutierrez will be item number three and public comment for Wendy Santa Maria will be item number eight. And after we go through these initial five items, we're going to take a small break and have a reception. So with that, Madam Clerk, would you read the first ceremonial item?
Yes. Item one, recognition of outgoing councilmember Alejandro Gutierrez.
Councilmember Gutierrez. Whereas Alejandro Gutierrez was elected to serve on the Santa Barbara City Council in November 2019 and was sworn into office on January 7th, 2020 for a five-year term. And whereas Alejandro Gutierrez was the first female, first Latina, first local-born resident to serve District One on City Council following the change of district elections. And whereas Alejandro Gutierrez's council achievements include supporting one of the more, supporting one of the strongest rent protection ordinances, guiding the Santa Barbara Police Department to be more community-oriented, fighting to preserve the original murals at Ortega Park, advocating for La Casa de la Rosa's historic landmark designation, pushing for increased community outreach with an emphasis on bilingual information, championing the East Side Neighborhood Park renovation, and while working with the Finance Director to ensure city budget information is accessible, transparent, and easy for the public to understand. And whereas Alejandro Gutierrez served as Mayor Pro Tem in 2023 and served on or as liaison to committees, boards, and commissions, including the Finance Committee as Chair, Parks and Recreation Commission, South Coast Youth Safety Partnership, and whereas some of the highlights of her service on council include helping many District One residents save their properties within hours of falling under state control when she stepped in as a bilingual elected official to work with residents and the Housing Authority, securing the final signature needed to pass the Downtown Business Improvement District, pressing for Milpus Christmas lights to be a line item in the city's budget, and leading a team effort to provide services to the unhoused living at an encampment at the Casique Underpass while ensuring the underpass remains clean and safe for local families and visitors. And whereas Alejandro Gutierrez is appreciated by fellow councilmembers, constituents, and staff for her commitment to making a difference in the Santa Barbara community. Now therefore, I, Randy Rouse, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the city of Santa Barbara, and on behalf of the Santa Barbara City Council and community, do hereby thank and commend Alejandro Gutierrez for her honorable service and wish her success and happiness in all future endeavors. Councilmember Gutierrez. Look at Josh. He looked at it. Take a second. I should like to say a few words.
I first want to thank my parents. My dad and his family came, actually, my great-grandfather came to Santa Barbara and that's how the Gutierrez ended up staying. My great-grandfather used to help for fiestas during, to decorate the floats. And the love for the city really started with my dad. He said that no matter what, he was going to raise his children here. As a local and growing up as a teen, Santa Barbara ends up being a little bored sometimes. And it was always my dad that he would remind me that I live in a place where people come to vacation. Growing up in a bilingual household and my mom cleaning houses in the most richest place in California, I really valued hard work. I also valued the sacrifices that my parents did. And my uncle Usta, who's here, my uncle Mario, he used to clean city halls when he was younger. And he shared a story with me this year that he, when he would clean city hall, he would always say, someday one of my family members is going to be in this building. And it ended up being his niece. I never thought I was going to be a politician. Everybody that knows me at a personal level knows I don't have that politician demeanor, but I was very grateful to this community and I've helped so many people. And I have a love for this community that I think a lot of us share that grew up here. And so I took on the opportunity to become a politician and a policymaker. And it was a great journey. I learned a lot. And it was such an honor to be able to serve as the first Latina in my district as a council member. And so I was, as I was cleaning out my office, I realized like, whoa, my, my family has now created history in this city. And it started with a dream. I remember every sacrifice my parents made and I made that someday I was going to give back to the community, that someday I was going to help somebody like myself make their lives a little bit easier. And that's how I became a politician. So I'm really thankful for everybody that supported me, everybody that encouraged me to grow and to get out of my comfort zone. And I want to thank my colleagues for the five years that we were together. We worked together in a time where the whole world didn't know what was going on. We worked together during COVID, during changes in leadership. And what a lot of people don't know is that councilmembers, it looks like we have the power, but at the end of the day, it's really city staff. But I just want to thank everybody and my community. And my loyalty will always be for the district that I represent, but for the entire community. And thank you.
Okay, then prior to councilmember comments from Ms. Gutierrez, we have a few public speakers that would like to speak specifically to her. And that would be, we'll start out with Mark Alvarado. We have three minutes at the dais, please.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Alejandro, I remember when you came to me and you told me you wanted to run for City Council. And I said, are you sure? And you were, and you were sure. And on behalf of the neighborhood, me as the Executive Director of the Boys and Girls Club and a lifelong resident of the neighborhood, we want to thank you. Yeah, it wasn't an easy road. It was a rocky road. But you always hung in there. And we're proud of you. Hopefully, this isn't the end of your civic engagement. That will see you in other endeavors. I'm not sure whether you'll ever run again. But if you do, you do, you know, that's always an opportunity. But I think, really, I think what you brought was a sense of cultura to this council like never before. I think that that was something that people gravitated towards and admired. You weren't always right and you weren't always wrong, you know, but you always spoke your mind and you spoke it with passion and with conviction. And that's admirable. You're not a sore loser. And I admire you for that because you're here with a beautiful smile on your face and you're here. So with that said, at the Boys and Girls Club, we have a lot of young girls there. And I hope that you can come and, and be a mentor to them because we need to elevate our young ladies more so than ever in, in what we're doing to help mentor and build character development with young people. The days of just rolling the ball out and having fun are gone. Those days don't exist anymore. With children now, the social, emotional, and behavioral issues are huge. And you know that because you were in the work for a long time in education. So I, I put that plug in because it's an invitation for you to come and be a part of what we do. And in closing, I also want to welcome Ms. Santa Maria to the, to the chair also. And I hope that she engages us as well, not just at the club, but in the community as well. But once again, congratulations for everything you did and what you represented for the neighborhood. So thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mario Gutierrez.
Hi, everyone. My name is Mario Gutierrez and I am Alejandro's favorite uncle. Like she said, Alejandro's great-grandparents immigrated from Mexico many years ago. And I am sure they would have been, that they'd never have dreamt back then that one of her descendants would be one day sitting in the chair at a city council. I am absolutely certain that they would be very proud. They would have been so proud. And the rest of the family, although we don't always express this to her, I am sure that in one way or another, she's always represented a great model to the people of her generation. And I know that she's always had my admiration. Just want to take a minute, Ali, to reiterate how proud the whole Gutierrez family is of you, your accomplishments, your dedication, and your passion to finding fair and viable solutions by the, that faced by the community of Santa Barbara. But more importantly, we're very proud of the great human being that you are. We know that your next endeavors will be full of successes because people like you make this world better. I will miss those long nights where you'd call me with, you know, please, please help me, you know, try to understand where I'm standing and give me some courage because I want to keep going. And I, that's where I know that she was very passionate about this. I used to live in Santa Barbara, now I live in Cincinnati, and that's why she would call me late at night. So we love you very much. And I know you'll be very, very successful.
Next speaker is Lori Beardsmore.
Mayor and councilmembers, and Alejandro, I would like to recognize you for being the first Santa Barbara born and raised Latina elected to District One. The city of Santa Barbara has lost an independent-thinking councilwoman. She's never, you never sought a political career and only ran when encouraged to do so by your constituents, not any groups with political agendas. You analyzed issues that came before you and you asked the probing questions and at times diverged from the Democratic Party that initially endorsed you. As your term went on, you became known as the swing vote and often left you alone on council as others distanced themselves. You didn't waver. You encouraged accountability in city government, something the rest of you might benefit from emulating. She was well-respected and not only in District One, but throughout the city. As a councilmember that was level-headed, smart, and free-thinking, and that voted by doing what was best for the long-term future, long-term future of Santa Barbara. I'm not a person of District One. I'm District Four and supported you totally. As you go forward, Council, in 2025 and beyond, you should take some lessons from Alejandro's legacy and do what's best for the cities of Santa Barbara's future and not your own political careers. At times, Alejandro's positions made her a target and she was threatened by those that sought to intimidate her. Her courage never wavered. And for that, I and many others will always respect and admire you. Thank you for your service.
Liz Adams.
Good afternoon, Mayor, councilmembers. On behalf of PATH as the Regional Director, I want to just say thank you, Councilmember Gutierrez, so much for all of your hard work and support of our organization and people on the East Side experiencing homelessness. And I really appreciated getting to go for the community walk with you in the class from Westmont College and really learning more about you and why you do the work that you do. And it was so inspiring to, to learn that and to, to see you engaging with the young people. And I think so inspiring for them to, to hear that and, and really see that anybody can, can make a difference and, and make so much change happen. So, so thank you for all of that. And I hope you continue to participate in our events and, you know, work with us as we, you know, continue to support Eastsiders who are unhoused. And as a community member, I just want to thank you too for how your, your work to, to make city council meetings and the information that we hear here more accessible. I really appreciated you pulling agenda items just to ask for it to be explained in kind of layman's terms so that, so that we could all really understand what was being talked about and what was being said. And I hope that that continues because I think it's so important for the community as a whole to, to know what's going on here and to be able to fully participate. So thank you for everything and I look forward to continuing to work with you in whatever capacity is next for you.
Madam Clerk, are there speakers online for this item?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Colleagues, you have comments for Ms. Gutierrez. Ms. Harmon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I'm, I'm very happy to go first. I'll start simply just by saying thank you, Councilmember Gutierrez. As you alluded to in your comments, public service is an incredible privilege. It's a noble calling, but it also can be really challenging. And as you said, these last five years, we've had some pretty unique challenges that have ranged from, excuse me, from the remarkable global pandemic to the more quotidian, the changes in staffing, the budget issues, all had a huge impact on the work that we did week after week. Meanwhile, we've been living in a time that's ever more online. And that comes with its own set of attendant complexities and dealing with some ever more significant challenges in the real world. It has not been an easy five years. But I, as I said to you earlier, and as I think is really important to acknowledge, even where we have disagreed, and we have disagreed and had some really healthy debates over a number of issues, your love for Santa Barbara and its people have never been in doubt. And it's been clear to me, and I think all of us who have watched you do this work, that that is what you have been led by. And so you have a lot to be very proud of from your service. I hope that you take some time to really think about the good work that you've done and to rest. And I, I very much appreciate all that you've done. Thank you.
Mr. Jordan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Took all of 20 minutes for me to have to follow you, didn't it? Right? Ali, I know you've heard me offer my feelings on district elections before, and I'm not really supportive of it. But I would just have to say that you are the, the absolute best example of a great result for, for a district election. Your background, your upbringing, your ties to the local community. And I think that will definitely be a loss moving forward for this group. And I wish you well.
Mr. Friedman.
Well, I thank you for your, your service. For me, it's been a real pleasure and honor to serve with you over the last five years. As has been mentioned, it's arguably one of the most challenging times to have served in elected office in, in our city, in particular in the last hundred years with the pandemic, social unrest, budget challenges. And it was a lot to deal with. And we all had our own personal lives at home, too, to deal with as well. And you handled that balance very honorably and remarkably well. Just a, a couple of things that I really learned from you, when you were, as Mr. Jordan articulated, was your commitment to the East Side and how you were the first one in the district to really show what it could be for district elections. And you were such an advocate in a way that had never been done prior for the residents of the East Side. And by elevating those issues, you're, you're making the city as a whole better because we need to pay attention to the entire city. And if you're, if one area or one district didn't have the same resources or the same advocacy, our city loses out at the end. And so you really changed the, the tension that the East Side was, was getting and will continue to get going forward. And you were also a strong advocate for our youth, which is very, very important for us and, and public safety. And for me personally, an item that we worked on that, that going forward, it, it was kind of a precursor to things to come was when there was the, the housing project was approved, 711 North Milpus. And it was a 76-unit housing project. And it was all market rate. And you came and you asked me to say, hey, what do you think about revisiting this and doing a development agreement to get a few more units, but to get a 20%, affordable project? And it had never been done before in this, in this manner. And it was very complex. And I thought about it and talked to staff. And it was something that we didn't know how to do it. And it, and in the end, we went forward and forged a process and it worked. And now that project is vested to have 16 affordable units, which will serve our entire city, but also a project that is more for, for the East Side as well. It will look nicer and be a, a better part of the community when it, when it gets built. And that was something that you brought forward. And, and I really thank you for asking me to do that with you because I learned a lot and it's helping me as a councilmember. So that's a project that was really important to our community to do what's possible. So again, I wish you the best and we will continue to make sure that we, we are paying attention to the East Side up here because we, we owe that to you and the East Side. So thank you.
Mr. Gutierrez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to reinforce about how you made history, you know, you, you made history for our city and, and you made history for your family. And you should be really proud of that, you know? And you're going to continue making history. I know you are. And it was a pleasure to serve with you. We, in the five years that we served together, we've, we dealt with things that councils members didn't deal with for over 100 years, you know? And, and you set boundaries and it's really respectable, respectable that you set these boundaries. And I also just want to give you credit that we all do things that aren't made public, right? We all sacrifice things that aren't made public, but they're huge to us individually, you know? And I know that you did a lot and, and you sacrificed a lot. And I'm very appreciative and, and yeah, just know that we're here at your service.
And for me, Ali, I, I'll miss our one-on-one chats. Hope we still can have some from time to time. I know that you had struggles and challenges, both personally and professionally, and you stood tall. You were very courageous of those. And I appreciate that. And I respect you for that. And I respect you for your community service and your dedication to the First District. So we all round, owe you a big round of thanks. So thank you. Very good. So Madam Clerk, can you read item four, please?
Yes. Item four is the affirmation of allegiance by councilmembers-elect Wendy Santa Maria, Mike Jordan, and Oscar Gutierrez. And I'll also read item five, which is presentation of the certificates of election.
Okay, let's get our honorees in. While, while we're assembling those folks, I'd like to mention in honor by the presence of former Mayor Helene Schneider in the audience, Councilmember James Carriaco, Councilmember, I think, there she is, Luis Reyes Martinez, and also the new mayor, Bilton David Silva. If I miss any other potent tastes out there, well, you guys know who you are. And with that, let's bring forward the people, you guys, you guys are going to take the allegiance pledge. Yeah. Front and center. And Ms. Santa Maria, I would assume is in the house?
I believe she's just in the other room. We'll grab her.
Yep, no time to hide. Here we are. And Madam Clerk, would you perform the swearing and ceremony, please? Affirmation.
Very good. Welcome. So for all three of you, I'm going to read the affirmation. I will read from over here. I'll throw the mic over. You can walk over. You can repeat as a group. And then afterwards, we'll have you sign the certificate. So you can be mic'd and I cannot.
Group public comment.
As a city clerk, I need to repeat this part. As a city clerk services manager, it is my honor to administer the oath of allegiance to you this afternoon. Do you solemnly swear or affirm, actually, I'm going to have you say yes after. I'll, I'll read the whole thing and you can say yes. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that you will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States? of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that you take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that you will fail well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which you are about to enter as councilmember?
Yes.
Yes.
See.
Congratulations. Whoever here will have you sign. Let's give you these certificates.
And what we're going to do, we're going to have a small reception, congratulatory reception in that room, right back there, Room 15, and then we'll come back and finish up the rest of the agenda. So, if you'd like to, please join us in Room 15 for a small reception.
Everyone, the council is seated. Per item, what, six? Is that correct, Madam Clerk? Very good. And if we could have everyone's attention, we're going to get back to the meeting and have some comments by our elected officials. Would you read that into the record, please, Madam Clerk?
Certainly. Item... Item seven is comments by council members Wendy Santa Maria, Mike Jordan, and Oscar Gutierrez.
Okay, very good. Ms. Santa Maria, you have the honor.
Thank you, Mayor Rouse. It's very surreal to be sitting here with how many times I have been standing right there, giving public comment over the years. And I would be remiss if I didn't thank everyone in this room and everyone who's not in this room from the bottom of my heart for making this win happen. This win was not something that I just did. This is not just my victory. This is our victory. We are securing a bright future for our city, and it's all thanks to you all. And please know that my door will always be open, no matter, you know, what issue you have, you know. The only way that we are going to make it through what unfortunately we're assuming are going to be some tough times coming up ahead is if we do it together, if we are seeing the humanity in everyone and recognizing that we need to help preserve the fabric of this city, no matter where you're from, no matter where you're born. We all deserve the chance to live in the city that we make possible. So, thank you all. I am incredibly honored to serve as your next city council member, and I am truly looking forward to the years ahead with you. Thank you.
Okay, that brings us up to Mr. Jordan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had to go back and pull out former Mayor Howe Conklin's book, just to get a kind of context. And I'm sure for some of the history buffs out there, I'll be a little inaccurate, but the city was incorporated in 1850. That's 175 years ago. Since that time, counting today's seating of council member Santa Maria, there've been 107... I'm sorry, 298 seated council members and mayors. At times, it's really easy to, I don't know, inside-baseball scoff at where you sit and say, "Oh, my God," and talk with friends and family, and maybe not give it its due. But if you do that math, 300 people over 175 years, it is such a small group of people on a large canvas of a city's past. And it's not a role that I have accepted slightly over the last five years, nor do I intend to do so over the next four. I'm extremely grateful for the public, the voters welcoming me back for a second term, and feel so privileged that I'm in a position to continue to help make small government work its best for our community. I have lots of people to thank for being here. It's award show season, so I'll try and spare you that, but I had a great team helping me over the last year and a half. Couple of them are in... Well, one for sure is in the room: Lee Heller, Ben Romo, Valerie Cantella, and Ruth Lumer. I only mention those names because those are four very, very different people, both from a political standpoint, from just their personalities and their perspective. And I really appreciate that mix, and that, I think, speaks to me to be that type of person, too, that can do that. There's a couple people that I get to spend every week with in the back row there. One is a several-generation Santa Barbaraan whose grandfather sat here 100 years ago as a city council member, and continually reminds me that it's not about me and that there are different perspectives. And some of those perspectives are old perspectives and not new perspectives, and I so appreciate that friendship and that guidance. And then, in our house... I'm fighting off a cold, so excuse me. In our household, getting back up on this pony again and riding for four more years is a joint decision. I'm sure everybody that's sitting here that has a significant other has the same situation. You take this job home, you live this job on the pillow on your bed 24/7, and who's ever there with you participates in that job. And I can't thank my wife Dana for joining me during that time and offering her full support. So, thank you. So, that was about all that I was going to say, so I want you just to sit back, big guy, and relax, okay? So, you know, everybody asks you, "Well, what are you going to do? You know, how many more potholes are you going to fill? Are you going to solve homelessness? Are you going to solve the rental and low-income housing problem over the next four years?" And when I was thinking about that last week on what I was going to talk about today, I got ambushed by the death of Jimmy Carter, which is totally weird for me because I do not play in that sandbox of national leaders and whatever. And I want to share a couple, two or three quotes for you. One, Mr. Mayor, is from you, so that should help us stretch this out a little bit. So, Jimmy, President Carter was talking about, and this is decades ago, about the relationships between countries and world leaders. And his quote was that "The world is now, in many ways, a more dangerous place. The greater ease of travel and communication has not been matched by equal understanding and mutual respect." So, I'm going to come back to some of that. And then, a couple days after that, I saw a column done by Celeste Barber, who has some connections up here, who, interestingly enough, wrote a letter in 1977, I think, to four, a combination either of current or past presidents, on a kind of a big-scale state of the state and how things were just not going in a great way. And part of her letter was this line, "That ordinary Americans use a rhetoric unfit for public discourse, yet they do so gleefully and with the authority of I-don't-know-what. At times, the language is cruel." Oddly enough, the nexus there between that and my first quote is of those four presidents, the only president that responded to her was former President Jimmy Carter, who wrote back on her note, "Celeste, thank you for your comments. I share your concerns." So, I started to see a pattern here in what I wanted to talk about today. Mayor Rouse's comment was in his Happy New Year, Happy 2025 column about a week ago in both the online news media, and it was "For every distasteful or despicable act we see in the news, there are millions of positive and productive acts every day we don't hear about." So, if you ask me what I'd like to see in the next four years, it's not really solving the world's problems. It's not really making sure all the potholes are filled and all the barking dogs are stopped, that kind of thing. It's really this realization that we share more with those we disagree with than we don't, that we all wake up in this city every day, and we're in a place where other cities would just love to be us, where other people would love to be with us. It's a community of good and bad, but it's a community that is looked at worldwide and regionally as one of the greatest small, little cities in the world, one that punches way above its weight class as a full-service city in what it provides to its community members, what it provides to those that are less fortunate, and what it provides to each one of us if we're just able to open our eyes and look around. And so, my hope is that over the next four years... And so, could I improve at that? Could I improve at... Definitely. I could be... Talk less and listen more. I could direct less and be more understanding, those type of things. And I think I'll drag down the rest of the group sitting up here with me. We all could do that better. The city as a functioning group of council and staff could do that better, but the community could also do that better, too. And so, my hope is, instead of starting conversations or discussions or even flat-out arguments by automatically setting up sides, that we realize we share a lot more than we differ on and work from that basis point to try and solve more things than we currently do. Think how effective we could be if that's where we started, rather than the left and the right, this side of the fence, that side of the fence, over here, over there. You're playing offense, I'm playing defense. Tomorrow, I get to play offense, you get to play defense. If we just had none of that and worked from a common foundation of appreciation for where we're starting out. So, I hope you'll join me. That's my pep talk. We've had a couple of weeks off, so I'm looking forward to getting back to work. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Gutierrez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I really consider myself blessed to be able to sit here and serve the people. I'm a big believer in the saying that it takes a village to raise a child, and it really took a lot of people to get me to where I am today. And I just want to name a few people and thank them. First, my dad, you know, rest in peace. He passed away about 14 years ago, but I think about him every day. He sacrificed a lot for our entire family. And my mom, who continually sacrifices a lot for me. And my siblings, no matter how much we fight and argue with each other, we're always showing up. My girlfriend Darla, who shows up for me even though she's as busy as I am. And my friends and family who have forgiven me and shown up for me and really gone out for me. And my colleagues and city staff. I know I could be a pain sometimes, so I appreciate your grace and patience and cooperation. A lot of people don't remember, but Mayor Rouse actually did not have a single gray hair until I got on council. But...
It's blonde.
But, you know, as I said, I'm here to serve, and I'm here at your service, and I just want to make sure that people know that we're here working for you. So, at any point, if you have any idea, concern, or issue that you want to address to us, don't hesitate to reach out. I really put myself out there as much as I can, even to a fault. So, I'll even share my phone number right now, so you can write it down. It's 805-669-6548. Just don't write it in any bathroom stalls, please. And yeah, I look forward to serving with all of you for the next four years. Thank you.
All right, thanks very much. We have a few folks that are signed up to speak to this item, and first is Lee Heller.
His honor, your grace, the mayor, and members of council. I knock on doors for people running for office. I've done that for most of you because I know that the quality of the people who sit up there determines the quality of the policies that are developed, the quality of the city that we live in and love. Some people, I want to remind, it's not always about them, because I'm not going to talk about you today, Mike, but I so appreciate all of you and what you are doing and the effort that you put into this city and to the 24/7 work that this involves. And Mike will tell you, I text him at all hours. I think that goes for a lot of you. So, I really appreciate what you do. As someone who also spends some time with some of you socially, I do know how hard you work. And when voters at the door are skeptical about politicians, what I love to be able to say is, in Santa Barbara and Santa Barbara County, our elected officials are seriously committed to serving this community. They are not politicians. So, thank you for being people who really care and put the time in. I want to welcome our newest council member, Wendy Santa Maria. I'm delighted to see you up here. I'm delighted by the youthful energy that you bring to this room with the people that are here in support of you. And the one thing I would say, you're already very wise, so this is probably not necessary advice, you have four years to get a lot done, so don't feel the need to rush your agenda. Take the time to build the relationships with your colleagues, to broaden your base of support, to figure out what's the best way to get things done so we can get the most done as best as possible. And I'm so glad you're here. Thank you all.
Thank you. Jaclyn Inda.
Mayor and council, my name's Jaclyn. I am the director over at Casa de la Raza, and I'm here representing that organization. I'm here really representing the work of the Latino community. I'm so glad to see this new council. In this year and in the coming years to come, especially in the city, Casa de la Raza needs to continue to work closely with this council and with all of our councils. As elected officials from District One to District Two to all of the different districts that you guys serve, the amazing strength that you have to stand when it comes to all of these federal policies that are coming in, maybe not all the way completely enforced, or maybe yes, the fear that causes upon our community is already happening. And so, the relationships and the partnerships between La Casa de la Raza and all of our other partners in the organizations that serve our Latino community are in great need of the guidance and the support of you guys as council members. I'm honored to have that partnership. I am honored to know that we have a council member now in that district that can really represent the needs of such a historical building. You're talking about 50, almost 55 years of legacy in that community, which is now a historical space for all of its work. Because of that, I lean on you as elected officials, as your newly-elected repositions, to also consider how we're going to work together as we start to approach potential federal policies and, of course, all of the fear that will come with that, that'll scatter throughout the community and affect the most voiceless in our agencies. So, I thank you for all of your work. I honor the fact that we have a working relationship, and I can't wait for these next couple of years to be able to really pave the way for the needs of not only districts but also all of the communities in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Jose Arturo Goyos.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and council members. First of all, congratulations to Councilmember Jordan, and congratulations to Councilmember Gutierrez. And I also want to mention, thank you very much for visiting at my place of residence, and you still have my contact info. And you're always welcome, you know, to come over, just let me know. You're a welcome guest in my home. And especially, congratulations, Councilmember Santa Maria. I know it was a tough battle for you. You had two things going against you, that you were focusing on rent control. Rent control. That's what everybody was criticizing you about. Rent control, rent control, rent control. The other criticism that you received, well, she's not a native of Santa Barbara, not born here, born elsewhere. I'm a Star Trek fan. To me, if you were from another galaxy, a Vulcan, Cardassian, a Borg, which now they're kind of like good guys, you know, or just, you know, some other, you know, from another galaxy, you, you know, you're here, and you've been here for quite some time. You know, you went to UCSB, you decided to settle here, and you are about the people. And the one thing that... I grew up on the East Side, and the one thing that, you know, I learned at a very early age, it was just not only just Latinos, Latinos, Latinos. Because one time, we had a black community in the East Side, we had your Asian community, you had the old Italianos from the old country. I grew up in a very diverse... So, it's just not a Latino community. It's everybody. Doesn't matter where they're from. It's everybody who comes to settle here in Santa Barbara. And I have met so many people from different countries. When I was attending City College, in one of my classes, I met a guy from Nigeria. in one of my classes, I met a guy from Nigeria. He still resides here in Santa Barbara. We run into each other, hey, how you doing Alfred? Hey, how you doing? You know? And that's just a diversity. It's all people from different parts of the world, and, and their nationalities. Thank you.
Thank you. Estela Montana.
Muy buenas tardes, señor presidente, y miembros del consilio. Wendy, quiero decirte que estoy sumamente orgullosa, y no me arrepiento haber sido parte de tu creación en organizarnos aquí. So, Causa me ha enseñado demasiado. Y eres tú la razón por la que continuo y continuaré. Eres una de las personas a la cual dije, y no me arrepiento haber dicho, te quiero ver sentada ahí. Porque tienes toda la capacidad para hacerlo. Y más que nada, eres amable, sencilla, y sabes de dónde vienes. Y no tan solo ayudas a un solo color, a una sola raza. Es todo el mundo el que te preocupa y que quieres que esté bien. Y estoy sumamente orgullosa de eso. Y seguiré apoyándote hasta que sea necesario. Muchas gracias a todos. Oscar, muchas gracias. También estoy orgullosa por tu amor a la comunidad, por todo el esfuerzo que hacen. Los agradezco infinitamente. Gracias.
Okay. Next speaker is Miguel Avila.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council members. My name is, my name is Miguel Avila, president and co-founder of the Greater Santa Barbara Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, founding president of the Santa Barbara Mariachi Festival. Two organizations that I have a lot of passion for. And when I talk about passion, I want to congratulate you, all of you, because to sit there, you must have passion. And, you know, I, I admire you guys. I don't envy you. Otherwise, probably I wouldn't make a run for, for a seat long, long time ago. 51 years, member of this beautiful, great city of Santa Barbara, which I consider a paradise, going back to 1973, which I don't think any of you were even born back in 1973, when I started working at the El Paso Restaurant. And my heart is always been pretty much, not only in downtown, not only with Latinos, but with pretty much every, everyone. Our Hispanic Chamber, even though it's called Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, that's because, you know, in 1964, when this movement started, that's what they happened to call them back in Texas, when this whole Hispanic Chamber chain started. California has 130, I think, of Hispanic Chambers. I just happened to be the one, the first one who started it back in 1994. And then somehow it passed away, but Jackie and I kind of revived the organization, calling it Greater Santa Barbara, covering the whole county. My passion is business. Promoting self-employment is my passion. Getting Latinos, and not only Latinos, everyone who has a desire to succeed in business, that's my passion. Because something that I have learned, I've been self-employed probably for 20, 30, over 30 years. My first 20 years was in the restaurant business, working for a couple of very popular, famous restaurants. But in, in my career as a business, self-employed, I learned that that's really where you can live a good life, live, have a lifestyle. And that's what I try to promote with anybody that wants to. You know, a lot of my, I'm in the real estate business, and one of the things that I ask my clients, you want to be a, a single homeowner for the rest of your life, or you want to be maybe a millionaire within the next 10 years? So, another thing that I want to just mention is that, congratulations to all the new re-elected and new council member, Santa Maria. Congratulations to all of you. And even though, you know, you've already been around for a while, and I wanted to recommend for all of you to, to be open-minded. If, if one of us are here to kind of remind you that it's a big city, and it's good to listen and have a dialogue in whatever issues that come up. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Kristin Miller.
Good afternoon, Mayor and members of the council. I'm Kristin Miller, president and CEO of the Santa Barbara South Coast Chamber of Commerce. And on behalf of the chamber, we are really just here today to congratulate the city on the successful election and today's installation of our returning council members and new. We're very proud of the great working relationship that we enjoy with each of you in your elected seats, as well as the fantastic city staff. In fact, we're proud of the city in general. You do a great job. We have wonderful challenges, but we have had some wonderful successes. And we stand here looking forward to a bright new year, and new directions, and congratulations again. Thank you.
Thank you. Liz Adams.
Hello again, Mayor, council members. Liz Adams, I'm the regional director at PATH. Just wanted to take this opportunity to say congratulations to, to you guys welcome back. And really to welcome our new district representative, Wendy Santa Maria. We're so excited. I've already enjoyed so much getting to know you, and having conversations with you, even on, on a personal level, participating in the parade with you. And, and you've really been very accessible already. So I'm really looking forward to all of the work that we'll be able to do together to, to best serve the East Side and those who are unhoused. So congratulations, and welcome to this great team. I really appreciate all of you and all of the conversations that we're able to have, and just your openness and accessibility to the community in general. So thank you all, and welcome.
Thank you. Next speaker is Aruny. I'm going to have you help me out with your last name, because I don't want to miss it.
What did you?
That's why I had you do that. Come on up, please.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and congratulations for all the city councilmen. While I'm a little nervous, I did not prepare for this, but I want to say that I am Aruny Boteju, born and raised in Sri Lanka, and my family moved here 28 years ago. I was barely 17 at the time. And I cannot be, cannot thank enough my parents to bring us to Santa Barbara. And this is a great city to live, and to actually be a part of it, too. I am the founder of the Silani International Film Festival Foundation, something I started with my sister, just for, out of passion. And that grew for four years. Now we are going planning our fourth year. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and the city of Santa Barbara for supporting us. And I believe now we are representing the South Asian region. And the city gave us so much, and I am who I am today because of this beautiful city. I cannot think of anywhere other than living here in Santa Barbara. I'm convincing my children that, too. So anyway, this is my home. And anything that I can do to help to bring the diversity and inclusion, I'm more, I'm very much to do it. And also, I'm part of the Greater Santa Barbara Hispanic Chamber of Commerce. I'm part of the executive committee. To be honest, I do not speak Spanish, but they include me a part of their team. This is a big family, and we are part of a big family to continue to grow as a big family. What I would love to see, maybe in the future, maybe another South Asian sitting in one of those chairs, and represent the city on behalf of the South Asian region as well. So thank you so much for all the stuff that you do, and we are really looking forward to work with you. Thanks.
Thank you. Kathy Janega Dykes.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Kathy Janega Dykes, and I'm president and CEO of Visit Santa Barbara. And for the three of you that campaigned successfully, and were sworn in today, congratulations to each of you. I'm very proud of the longstanding partnership that Visit Santa Barbara, our hospitality industry has had with each of you on the dais, as well as your dedicated city staff, who really makes Santa Barbara shine. And we know that many of our priorities are certainly aligned with all of yours, whether it's fostering a vibrant community, providing jobs, or ensuring a strong quality of life for all of our residents. And I especially want to commend councilmembers Gutierrez and, and Jordan, for the role that they've served, as, serving as liaisons to our board of directors. Councilmember Gutierrez, you have done that for several years. And then Councilmember Jordan, you are our current liaison to our board. And I don't know whether you know, but your help is so greatly appreciated by our board, as well as our hospitality community. You've spent a great deal of time, dedicated, a lot in terms of navigating, and, and educating, and helping us with our industry. And frankly, for the broader community as a whole. So congratulations to all of you, and here's to a successful 2025.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, are there speakers online for this item?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Very good. Madam Administrator, are there changes to the agenda?
No, Mayor, there are not.
Okay, very good. And with that, we will go to general public comment for three minutes of the dais for items that are not on today's agenda, but are within the purview of this body. I'll start out with Jose Arturo Gallegos.
Okay. I know there's, you know, been long dragged out situation with what to do with State Street. We're going to go about with State Street, you know, what's, what's going to be the final plan, design. And the one thing that I've had an issue with, and so many other people, is those on bicycles, the e-bikes, skateboarders, and scooter riders, and so forth. And that has been a big issue. Many of them, they're just like, you know, road warriors, you know, on State Street. And I'm not sure if any of you are aware of this or not, but the city of Ventura, they had the same problem on Main Street. Once they closed off Main Street for pedestrians, it was the same situation. What the city of Ventura did is they put a ban of those riding on bicycles, e-bikes, scooters, skateboards, because a lot of pedestrians, senior citizens with lockers, canes, wheelchairs, and even bombs, you know, you know, whether newborns, you know, and pushing them in carriages, just practically crashing into them. What happened about a month and a half ago or so, I, I had found out that this man in his 70s was riding his e-bike down on State Street. I don't know how fast he was going. But he crashed into one of those big old planters, right there on Carrillo Street. And what happened was, he was trying to avoid hitting a little girl, that was probably walking there or crossing the street with, you know, the mom or dad, or something like that. So this individual went flying off his e-bike, and wound up at the, at the hospital with a broken neck and a broken spine. So I think the best thing to do is to put bike lanes, like on Chapala Street, and Acapa, and Santa Barbara Street. And no more biking, skating, you know, on State Street anymore. And I think that should be the final plan. If, if the city of Ventura did it, I think Santa Barbara can do the same thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Helen Larson.
Good afternoon. I am Helen Larson, and I wanted to congratulate you all for sure. I'm, the reason I'm here is because I saw an article that said we had a housing crisis. And I thought, well, we do. And the reason why I say that is because I've been here since 1962, when my dad took a job at City College. But the thing is, we bought our land in 1970, took seven years for us to build the place. And I'm having to consider how much traffic there is, how much crime there is. I just, I am very reluctantly considering selling my home. And it's because I think I'm in danger. Every time I come down into town, the best thing for me to do is to come up into town between 11:00 and 2:00. My, one of my tenants just got hit about a week ago on coming off Castillo on her way over to the harbor, and, to work. And she was, a guy went through the green light, hit her in the driver's side. And now she's having to crawl in through the passenger side to get to her car, because her funds are limited, though she does have appointments to have her car fixed. But this is more and more, as I read next door, and look at The Independent, and I think, you know, if there was, maybe people would consider, our town is growing incrementally, but what about the services? Some of us, yesterday I had to wait three months for the appointment with the pulmonologist. I, I have talked to a girl, maybe a day or two ago, she's waited a whole year to see her gynecologist. And I think that when you make decisions about developing more housing, more traffic, more vying for appoint medical and dental appointments, you need to think. Okay? Thank you. Bye.
Thank you. Final speaker will be John Steenstra. I think I might have that name right.
Good afternoon. I'm John Steenstra, and just want to share something, because it's very frustrating for me using a walker to try to cross any street here. The law enforcement is not good here at all. They don't seem to do anything about these bikes traveling up and down State Street, for one. Very dangerous if you can't find a, a signal light to cross that. A few months ago, I was down here, about two months ago, I guess, down here at Yan and Alley, by the train station. Went to cross Yan and Alley when the light turned green for me, or whatever. And here's a kid coming down, two of them on a bicycle, on one bicycle, and they weren't going to stop. I mean, if I hadn't been paying attention to what that bicyclist was going to do, I mean, it would have, boom. And why is that? Because there's no law enforcement out there? They don't care? Whatever. I don't know. Yesterday, or the day before yesterday, I was going up Chapala Street, by the Old Nordstrom's Building. And here's an e-bike on the sidewalk going west on Cannon Perdido Street, hauling ass. I mean, excuse my French, but I mean, one more step, I'm going to the hospital. Not to mention, the walker's going to be shot. So again, who's, what is it that needs to happen here? Because I'm going to go, you know, to the hospital, or something's going to happen. Why wait for it to happen? And why doesn't the police do something about it? We're all paying for a service here. They should be out there walking the street, rather than riding around in their squad cars, not doing, seeing what's going on there. You're not going to see everything from the car. The public's at large, like me, I'm just a target for somebody to get nailed. So I'm very concerned about that. I don't know what you guys can do about it, but something needs to change, before somebody ends up getting hurt. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, is anyone online for this item?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, very good. With that, we'll close general public comment, and go to councilman committee assignment reports, or the committee assignments, given that we are on vacation, likely not. Okay, very good. With that, we'll move on to item nine. Madam Clerk, would you read that into the record, please?
Certainly. Item nine, appointment of mayor pro tempore, ordinance committee, and finance committee.
All right, very good. So as, as I know it, I believe, what's that? As I know it, Mr. Friedman, I believe is up in terms of rotation for mayor pro tem. And I would take a nomination to that effect, if that's the case, Ms. Harmon?
I'll second.
Okay, yeah, I did, you know, I didn't look up in time. But yes, it's first, Jordan second by Harmon. Maybe we had, all, any discussion of that motion? Okay, very good. May we have the vote, please, Madam Clerk?
Very good. And please correct me as we go along, if I'm incorrect. A motion by Councilmember Jordan. A motion by Councilmember Jordan, seconded by Councilmember Harmon, to nominate Eric Friedman for Mayor Pro Tem. Please go ahead and vote.
And do you need the blank one to function or no? Nope, no, you don't? Good, very good. Okay, that passes unanimously. We have all members here, Kristen Sneddon being absent. And the second recommendation is the council consider the appointment of the chair members of, the chairs of both the ordinance and the finance committees. So, that being said, Ms. Harmon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to nominate, excuse me, nominate Mayor Pro Tem Friedman to chair the finance committee. We have a really important year coming up with this new budget cycle. He's extremely experienced, knows everything there is to know about the budget, and I very much enjoy being part of that committee under his leadership.
Very good. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Mr. Gutierrez puts a second on it. Okay. If there's no further discussion, let's go ahead and have the vote, please.
Okay. This is a motion by Councilmember Harmon, seconded by Councilmember Oscar Gutierrez, to appoint Eric Friedman as Chair of the Finance Committee. Please go ahead and vote.
That passes unanimously. Law members here, Kristen Sneddon absent. What we do when it comes up. All right. And then the last one for Chair is Chairperson of the Ordnance Committee, who is currently, whom? Mr. Jordan, okay. Mr. Gutierrez.
I'd like to nominate Councilmember Sneddon.
Give me great pleasure to second somebody who's not here.
You know, I became president of a few business organizations that way. All right, very good. If there's no further discussion, let's go ahead and have the vote on that. There's a first and second, and Councilmember Sneddon becoming Chair.
Very good. That is a motion by Councilmember Oscar Gutierrez, seconded by Councilmember Jordan, for Councilmember Sneddon to be Chair of the Ordnance Committee. Please go ahead and vote.
Passing unanimously, with all present, except for the nominee herself, Councilmember Sneddon. Okay, very good. We'll move on to the council liaison assignments. And Ms. Santa Maria, have you been briefed on kind of what we're doing here? Okay, because normally we will put out a kind of a survey amongst the members, didn't really happen this year, so there's only one change in the membership of this board. So what will go down, and I will read out who we have presently, and if there is a desired change, we'll state that. And we can talk about that, otherwise we'll go ahead and accept what we've got. We do not have to do a motion on each one of these, just at the end as a, as a slate, unless there's a change, and we can pull those out.
Mr. Mayor, are we coming back to the vacancy on the Finance Committee?
It, isn't that on the thing here? It is.
Well, it's not, yeah, it's not an advisory group or liaison.
Down in the standing committees, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll get there. You and Freeman, geez. Okay, I'm going to read down, I'm going to read who the current liaison is, and if that's okay with you, then please signify by saying that it is. So first is the Access Advisory Committee, currently is Oscar Gutierrez. You want to keep that, Mr. Gutierrez?
I'd keep it if, unless anybody else wants to take it.
Okay, it is, Mr. Gutierrez is willing to stay on it unless someone else would like to take his place. Okay, it sounds like you're the, you're the person again, Mr. Gutierrez, if that's all right.
Okay.
Airport Commission, right now is Eric Friedman.
I'd like to keep that.
Like to keep that? Anybody else? Okay, very good. Architectural Border Review is currently Megan Harmon with the alternate being Alejandro Gutierrez.
Mr. Mayor, I would love, if Councilmember Santa Maria wants to take that, we can just switch and I'll be the alternate, she can be the liaison, if she's interested.
Mr. Mayor, Santa Maria?
It's a good one to learn.
Yeah, I can do that.
Okay, very good. All right. Sounds great. So we'll switch those around. Okay, Arts Advisory Committee is currently Oscar Gutierrez.
I'd like to stay on that, please.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Building and Fire Code Appeal is moi, I'm going to do that. Citizens Oversight Committee is currently Alejandro Gutierrez. Ms. Santa Maria, are you willing to do that?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. As is the Civil Service Commission.
Also willing.
Once again, thank you. Community Development and Human Services Committee is currently Councilmember Sneddon. And anybody else want to apply that, she is nominated then. Community Events and Festivals Committee currently Oscar Gutierrez.
I'd like to keep that, please.
Thank you. Creeks Advisory Committee is currently Councilmember Sneddon with the alternate, Mr. Jordan. Have you spoken to Ms. Sneddon about that, Mr. Jordan? I'm going to assume that she'd like to do that, since that's her field of interest. So that worked for everyone?
Still good, sir.
Okay, very good. Downtown Parking Committee is currently Mr. Jordan with Ms. Harmon as the alternate.
Still good.
Good, Ms. Harmon, thank you. Fire and Police Commission is currently Oscar Gutierrez.
I'd like to stay on that, please.
Okay, thank you. Harbor Commission, currently Mr. Jordan. Good with that? Thank you. Historical Landmarks Commission, which is Ms. Sneddon currently, with the alternate being Oscar Gutierrez.
I can give that up if anybody wants it.
Okay. Would anybody else like to be the alternate? I'm, we're assuming that Ms. Sneddon is going to retain her liaisonship.
If not, I'll stay on it.
Okay, thank you very much for that. The Housing Authority Commission is currently Megan Harmon, with the alternate was Alejandro Gutierrez.
I'd like to keep that, please.
Okay, Ms., okay, Ms. Santa Maria, good with the alternate on that?
Yes, I can be the alternate.
Library Board, Mr. Friedman.
I'd like to keep that.
I thought you would. Living Wage Advisory Committee is currently Alejandro Gutierrez, with the alternate being Oscar Gutierrez.
Mayor, we, the council did disband that committee, so that is no longer an active.
Works out for moi. Very good, thank you. Neighborhood Advisory Council is currently Oscar Gutierrez.
I'd like to stay on that, but I could also use an alternate if anyone's interested.
Okay. Would anybody like to be, we don't have an alternate assigned currently, but would anybody like to, or act as alternate on the neighborhood advisory committee? Okay, Luke Sacker flying solo here still. Okay. Parks and Recreation Committee was Alejandro Gutierrez, with the alternate being Kristen Sneddon. Ms. Santa Maria, would you like to be that person?
Yes.
Thank you. Planning Commission is Michael Jordan.
Good to go.
Thank you. Rental Housing Mediation Board was Alejandro Gutierrez, with the alternate is Oscar Gutierrez. Ms. Harmon.
I'm interested in that. I can be either the liaison or the alternate, doesn't matter to me.
As the, as the...
The liaison or the alternate.
Can I recommend Councilmember Harmon as the liaison and Councilmember Santa Maria as the alternate?
Works for you?
Yes, that works for me.
Okay, that'd be great. So Harmon is the liaison, Santa Maria as the alternate. You have that, Madam Clerk? Thank you. Santa Barbara Youth Council was Mr. Gutierrez as the liaison, Alejandro Gutierrez as the alternate.
I'd like to stay on as the liaison.
Okay. Ms. Santa Maria, would you like to be the alternate on that?
Uh, no.
Okay. Would anybody else like to be the alternate for Santa Barbara Youth Council?
I'll, no, go ahead.
Oh, please.
You go. You got younger kids. My kids are, my kids are almost not kids anymore, so.
I will be the alternate, thank you.
Okay, yeah, she's, she's a little behind your timeline there. Okay, very good, thank you. Single Family Design Board currently is Mr. Jordan, and then alternate was Alejandro Gutierrez.
Still good.
Good there? Ms. Santa Maria, Single Family Design Review Board, alternate.
I can stay on as an alternate.
Okay, very good, thank you. Sister Cities Board is Oscar Gutierrez with me as the alternate.
I'd like to stay the liaison.
Still good, okay, very good. Transportation and Circulation Committee, Mr. Jordan.
I, sorry, I could stay or go if, if Santa Maria is looking for, to be a lead on, on that, on a committee like that, I'd be happy to give it up.
Okay, Ms. Santa Maria, that's to you, would you, is that something you're interested in?
Would this be for Transportation and Circulation Committee?
Yeah, Transportation and Circulation Committee.
Yeah, I can do that.
Okay, very good, thank you. And the Water Commission was obviously Councilmember Sneddon, ultimate Friedman?
Yeah, I'll stay for one more year.
Okay, stay there, I'm sure Ms. Sneddon's still interested in that. Okay, the Standing Committees, the biggies, we had Alejandro Gutierrez and Friedman and Harmon, so Ms. Santa Maria, are you on the committee with that? Is everybody good with that? Ordnance Committee, so we have Jordan, Sneddon, and Gutierrez, that's, we're still there, very good. Sustainability Council Committee, Freeman, Harmon, Sneddon. Freeman and Harmon, are you guys both still good?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, very good. And State Street Advisory Committee, I guess we still have that, right? This, Ms. McAdoo?
I thought we...
Do we do?
We, that will, is also being, coming, the closure to the end, I can't even speak. Yes, that committee will be wrapping up, yes. But there should be, I think, one more meeting as we finalize.
Okay, so we'll give that a strong maybe with the current members?
Yes, I would say leave the current members so that there's closure with the current configuration, and then that will be the last of the advisory committee.
Okay, very good. Madam Clerk, are you going to need a motion on the slate as we've done it so far?
I think we can do just one motion at the very end.
I'm sorry?
One motion at the very end for...
Okay, so we'll just continue on and go through the whole, we're good with that? All right.
Yeah, that's right.
The Committee on Legislative, and that's what develops our legislative platform, is currently Freeman, Harmon, and Sneddon.
Still good.
Still good?
I'd like to stay.
Still good, and I'm going to assume Ms. Sneddon is still good. The Daily Plaza Revitalization Design Advisory Committee.
We haven't met in a very long time, but I'm happy to stay on it.
Okay, Harmon, and the other one was Kristen Sneddon, so we're going to assume that. The Housing Crisis Task Force.
I believe that also.
Are we sunsetting that? Is that correct?
That one is sunsetted because the recommendations were presented to council, and so now we have brought that work to staff, and we'll continue to work on those.
And the Land Development Team Oversight Subcommittee, that was Freeman, Alejandro Gutierrez, and Michael Jordan. Mr. Freeman?
I'll stay.
Stay? Mr. Jordan?
Good to go.
Okay, Ms. Santa Maria, would you like to be part of that?
Yes.
Thank you. Coastal Village Road Improvement Association, that was, do we, is it, I mean, is that a liaison to their bid?
That, that is my understanding correct.
Okay, so I'm going to assume, because that's her district, Sneddon would like to stay there. Downtown Santa Barbara is currently myself with Mike Jordan as the alternate. Mike, are you good to go on that? Thank you.
And I just also want to reiterate that that, the Downtown Santa Barbara organization will be concluding this year, this will be the last fiscal year.
Right, we have another half a year to go, don't we?
Yes, yeah, another half year to go. And then the C-Bid Board, currently I'm sitting on that board as the representative from the city organization, but we can talk about whether, once they get up and are actually have their formal board and organization, they're kind of in an interim board situation right now, so once that is finalized, I think.
And we can decide if we want a liaisonship or whatever. Very good, thank you. Looking good, Santa Barbara was Sneddon with myself as the alternate. I guess we're good with that. Path and Neighborhood Partnership, Oscar Gutierrez, the alternate was Alejandro Gutierrez.
I'm still good with being liaison.
Ms. Santa Maria, would you like to be the alternate for that?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Presidio Joint Powers Committee, Ms. Harmon.
Keep it up.
You've been to all of those meetings, right? Yeah, me too. Santa Barbara Beautiful, Mr. Friedman.
I'll stay.
Thank you. The Santa Barbara Center for the Performing Arts was Oscar Gutierrez and alternate Alejandro Gutierrez.
I'd like to stay as liaison.
Okay, liaison, and Ms. Santa Maria, thank you. Visit Santa Barbara, Michael Jordan.
Still good.
Okay. Santa Barbara Chamber of Commerce, Jordan with alternate was Eric Friedman.
Still good.
Good, good?
Good.
Thank you. And the Park Foundation, Freeman?
Actually, on that one, it's scheduled at a time when I work most of the time, so I can't make it, so I'm going to put it out there.
Anybody want to be part of the Park Foundation?
When is that, Eric?
I knew somebody was going to ask me. It's like the third Wednesday of the month at noon.
Nobody else wants it, I'll jump on that.
Yeah, I think it's the third Wednesday of the month at noon.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan. Okay, Beacon, currently is Freeman with the alternate being Jordan.
Stay.
Stay.
Good, thank you. CCRB, which is Sneddon, alternate Friedman.
Stay.
I'm sure Sneddon would like that, as well as the COME, the Consumer Operations and Maintenance Boards, Sneddon and Freeman.
Stay.
Home for Good, Jordan and Harmon.
I can stay or give that up.
Okay, it's, it just has you listed, it has to say alternate, it says the both of you, so I don't know if that's a...
Really more of an alternate.
Okay. All right. Central Coast Water Authority, Freeman and alternate Sneddon.
Stay.
Very good. City County Affordable Housing Task Group, Sneddon and Harmon.
And this also occurs at a time that's usually a conflict for me if someone else wants to take it.
Okay. Okay, so it would be, it would be Sneddon and Ms. Santa Maria, would that be? Very good, thank you. CCRB, or no, Coastal River Coordinating Council, that's me, I'll take, obviously do that. COME Unify.
I'd like to stay on that.
Okay, and the alternate to that was Alejandro Gutierrez, is that Ms. Santa Maria?
It can be the alternate, yeah.
Okay, thank you. LoSan is me, I'm staying there. APCD is myself and, are you still ready to be alternate, Mr. Freeman?
Yeah.
And SB CAG is me with Mr. Freeman as the alternate.
Yes.
MTD Board is me, I'm willing to stay with that. South Coast Youth Safety Partnership was Alejandro Gutierrez and alternate was Sneddon. Ms. Santa Maria?
I can give that one up.
Okay. You can give that one up, or?
Yeah, open for anyone else that wants to take it.
I could take it. I attend the meetings anywhere.
Okay, so Oscar Gutierrez with the alternate would be Councilmember Sneddon. And United Way Brighter Future Children, Childcare Coalition, is that Ms. Harmon?
This is me. If anyone else is interested, I'm happy to share it. I don't even know that the meetings will be continuing into this year.
I was going to say, do, what is there, do they have a scheduling?
I don't think that they are. It was quarterly, and I think they may be done. And it also involves some conflicts for me often with coastal commissions, so if someone else wants to be an alternate in the event, we have one, I could just float it with you guys, but it may be done.
Anyone?
I could take it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gutierrez. Okay, and then we have League of California Cities and U.S. Congress of Mayors, that's me, and that's it. Okay, with that, if everybody's clear on who's doing what, I would ask for a motion on the slate.
Just quickly, just to open it up quickly for public comment, just...
Thank you, okay.
And we'll view this entire process as deliberation.
I have no speaker slips to this event, Ms., Ms., Madam Clerk, are there anybody, anybody online for this?
Nobody online, and before we take the motion, I just have two items where I have a question.
I'm sorry, one more time now?
No one online, and before we take the motion, I have two items where I just want to be clear who was...
Okay, thank you, go ahead.
For the State Street Advisory Committee was a person?
We're leaving the current membership because they're probably only going to have one more meeting.
Very good. And, and one moment?
Kind of sliding with that one, right?
Okay, that's it, Mr. Mayor, so we're ready for a motion and a vote.
Okay, very good. May I have a motion as to the slate of liaison appointments?
So move.
Ms. Harmon, she had a light on.
You're first.
There's just no rules or order in this court. So moved.
Second.
Moved by Harmon, second by Freeman. Hopefully we're clear on that, Madam Clerk?
Very good. Yes, that is a motion by Councilmember Harmon, second by Friedman, and go ahead and vote, please.
Slate passed unanimously with members present, absent Kristen Sneddon. Okay, very good, thank you. With that, we'll move on to council member engagements, if there are any. Mr. Gutierrez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, over the Christmas break, there was a lot of events that were held throughout the city celebrating the holidays, and there's too many for me to list, but I just want to thank everybody that is a part of making this community such a fun place to be during the holidays. It's really a blessing, and we're lucky to live here. Thank you.
All right, are there any further ones? I actually got to go and be a part of the dinner service at the rescue mission, the dinner service for Christmas dinner, and that was a very rewarding experience, which I would recommend for anybody that thinks about doing something like that. And then we also have, of course, a president that we must respect and adjourn the meeting in memory of, as well as local celebrity Gary Fruin, whose life we celebrated here just a few weeks ago before he passed away. With that, we'll adjourn this meeting in their honor until next week. See you then. Thank you.